Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abu Wasli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Menzer?
Here.
Mr. Sternan?
Here.
It's time we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. First on our agenda this evening, we have a proclamation for Black History Month, followed by an award presentation, so I'll come down first. I'd like to ask Steve Mosher from our Civil Rights Commission to come forward and Amel Altaher, come on forward. She's the staff liaison to the Civil Rights Commission.
Okay, I'm pleased to make the proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we recognize and celebrate the many important achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our nation's economic, cultural, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the observance of Black History Month is an opportunity for Marion residents to reflect on the value that all people add to our diverse community and the need to continue our efforts to stand up to racism and work actively to build a truly equitable and just society for all people. And whereas the city of Marion strives to be a welcoming and inclusive community in which all residents are valued and given opportunities to achieve their goals and make positive contributions. And whereas the city of Marion is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our city and throughout our state and nation. And whereas the 2022 national theme for the observance of Black History Month is Black Health and Wellness. Now therefore, in recognition of the rich history of African Americans and the contributions of African Americans, past, present, and future, I Nicholas Abu Wasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month in the city of Marion and encourage all residents to celebrate diversity as an asset to Marion. Seek out educational opportunities on the history and contributions of African Americans and join our city's efforts to promote progress toward a society that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
All right, thank you. Do you have to say anything?
Yes.
Yeah. So I guess I'm saying something, right? Well, Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the proclamation. At our last meeting, which was last night, we talked a little bit about what we're going to try to do. Unfortunately, we were supposed to have this meeting in January and it got canceled due to quorum. And so, last minute, we thought of some things that we're going to try to do and we're going to talk to Amber about some things that we can try to at least communicate out into the public. And going forward, we're going to be a little bit more active in any of the proclamations that we present to the council. And we will try to sponsor some activities within the community. So but I do appreciate what you're doing and one last comment. This has gone through my transition from the task force in which we were able to list many of the things that the council in the city of Marion has been doing to try to promote diversity and equity in the community. And quietly, unfortunately, they are not tooting your own horn. They should get out in front of it and promote what they've done in the past, what they're continuing to do in the present and in the future. They're making very big strides. I first came in contact with Marion probably 50 years ago. As a young man coming from the East Coast to go to college, I was told that I should probably, a person of color, avoid Marion at all cost. I live in Marion now for 22 years. So things have changed. They are getting better. Haven't done everything, but they are getting better. And it's a good pat on the back to the council and the mayor and you as city employees, the efforts that you're doing in the community. And I do appreciate that. And I thank you very much.
Good evening, Council and those in attendance. It's my pleasure to introduce someone to you tonight. Allison Graham, would you stand up here with me, Allison, please? Some of you may recognize Allison, her name, from a KCRG story last week. And for those who don't, I'll speak a little bit about this event. Allison is an employee of Anytime Fitness on Seventh Avenue in Marion. A few weeks ago, they had a customer collapse and cardiac arrest. And thank you to Allison. She immediately responded to this patient, rolled them into a supine position and began chest compressions. Any CPR-trained person or instructor will tell you the most important thing to maintain oxygen flow to the brain is chest compressions, and that's exactly what she started. There's remarkable footage on that clip that showed her in action along with others that were there that day. I even know-
It was definitely a group effort.
I noticed that. Someone else was by the patient's side, holding their hand. Someone else had a water bottle while they're on the phone with 911. It was a great group effort. First responders from the police department and fire department showed up along with the area ambulance, continued that. And actually, if I'm not mistaken, the report shows that the patient actually regained consciousness prior to leaving the scene. And his life was saved. That was what was recognized on there. I'm drawing a blank here. Hang on. I told you I had a lot to say. But I think another thing to note in that news story was not only the actions taken, which were remarkable, and what Allison provided as a CPR-certified person to this community, but the remarks she made afterwards and the fact of the cost of that certification, the time spent to get that certification are pennies on the dollar compared to saving somebody's life and giving them the chance to see the light of day the next day. The patient was there. He's been very thankful to Allison. I think his community are very thankful to her. This is the first public council session we've gotten to have since that event. So we want to make sure we got this on a public council forum. So Allison, on behalf of the Marion Fire Department, cities, the city's elected officials, the city departments in general, and the community that you have also served and citizens, we thank you very much. And we want to present you with this award in front of council.
Thank you.
The award says, "Life-saving Award Presented to Allison Graham for Her Life-saving Actions on January 17, 2022, Presented by the City of Marion, Iowa." I want to thank you for your actions on behalf of the council and the community. You know, we live in a world where people don't want to get involved. And to have someone who is willing to take a risk and step forward and get involved and know what to do is pretty amazing. So thank you so much on behalf of the community.
Thank you.
Counsel, you're in it, so smile pretty.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more award to give tonight or a certificate. We've had this for a couple of months. I've been trying to give this to Colette, a council member, Colette Atkins, but for various circumstances, we haven't been able to present it. Either she was not able to attend a meeting in person, was virtual, and I was not able to attend. So in any case, Councilmember Atkins, for the last year, served as the Mayor Pro Tem for the Marion City Council. And so I'd like to give her this certificate of appreciation with gratitude for her service as Mayor Pro Tem. She did a terrific job. And as everyone knows, ever since coming into this position six years ago, every year I changed the Mayor Pro Tem position because I think we have a very qualified council and everyone gets the opportunity to serve in that position. So Colette, I just want to thank you for your time as Mayor Pro Tem.
You're back. Yes.
Okay. That brings us to the end of the presentations this evening. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside on the agenda for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Any comments that are not regarding an agenda item, there'll be another opportunity to give those comments later on in the meeting. Are there any members of the public here to address the council on any item that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing? Please come forward. Okay. Seeing none, we will proceed with the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F1, Resolutions 30249 through 30257.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolutions 302, or the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F1, Resolutions 30249 through 0257. Discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. I will turn over the meeting to Mayor Pro Tem for this next section.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Wasli's abstention as follows. Item B1 to E2, Resolutions 30258 to 30261.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Wasli's abstention. Items B1 through E2, Resolutions 30258 through 30261. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries with one abstention. I will turn it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Your Honor, I move to approve the Mayor Abu Wasli's recommended appointments. This will be Historic Preservation Committee with Scott Fones. Term expires 12/31/2024, and Civil Rights Commission Rafaela Cadena. Term expires 12/31/2024.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the recommended appointments to the Historic Preservation Committee. Scott Fones for a term expiring December 31st, 2024. And to the Civil Rights Commission Rafaela Cadena for a term expiring 12/31/2024. I would note that I've met with both of the candidates and recommend their appointment. Rafaela was interviewed by several people from the Civil Rights Commission, and she comes with their recommendation. Mr. Fones comes with the recommendation of Dave Hockett also, who is the staff liaison to that committee. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of making the recommended appointments to the Historic Preservation Committee and the Civil Rights Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Mr. Fones is here tonight, so congratulations. Okay. Moving on to Public Services.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 22-01, amending Chapter 99 of the Code of Ordinances relating to sanitary sewer by increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from 439 to 460. And this is our final consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-01, amending Chapter 99 of the Code of Ordinances relating to sanitary sewer by increasing the monthly domestic and industrial user charges from 439 to 460. Discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 22-01, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to make a motion directing staff to obtain a quote for repair of the Civil War statue from John Ward of Masterworks Studio LLC.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to direct staff to obtain a quote for the repair of the Civil War statue in City Square Park from John Ward of Masterworks Studio LLC. Discussion? Okay, so for purposes of the public, the statue was severely damaged in the through H.O. All right, no more discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Under engineering, we have a public hearing on the 2022 pavement rehabilitation project. Do we have a recap, Mr. Barklow?
Yes, Your Honor, so this is the rehab of Marion Boulevard with a partnership with the city of Cedar Rapids. So we did receive three bids, a little bid coming in from Midwest Concrete at $624,074.48, just under the engineer's estimate. It's a late start date of 8/1/22 with 40 working days and $1,000 per day in liquidated damages. And we are recommending award of the contract.
Okay, are there any members of the public here to? The public hearing is now open, by the way. Any members of the public here to address the council either in favor or in opposition of this measure, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 30262, Accepting Bids and Awarding Contract to Midwest Concrete Incorporated Regarding the 2022 Pavement Rehabilitation Project in the Amount of $624,074.48.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. And we approve the Resolution Number 30262, Accepting the Bids and Awarding the Contract to Midwest Concrete Inc. for the 2022 Pavement Rehabilitation Project in a total amount of $624,074.48. Discussion? Quick question. Go ahead, Will.
Just refresh memory. It's from RMR to where?
Almost Collins.
Almost Collins. Okay, so now all the way to the intersection.
Yeah, I don't think we're actually getting into the intersection, but it's close to.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion questions? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 30262, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve project calendar regarding the 2022 HMA resurfacing project. Resolutions 30263 through 30265.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2022 HMA resurfacing project, including Resolutions 30263 through 30265. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve project calendar regarding the 2022 pavement patching project as follows. Resolutions 30266 to 30268.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2022 pavement patching project, including Resolutions 30266 through 30268. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the Indian Creek Trail Project. This will be Resolutions 30269 through 30271.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the Indian Creek Trail Project, including Resolutions 30269 through 30271. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 222-03, amending Chapter 95, Section 95.04 of the Code of Ordinances relating to sanitary sewer connection requirement. This is our second consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-03, amending Chapter 95, Section 95.04 of the Code relating to sanitary sewer connection requirements. Discussion? All those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number 22-03, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 22-02, approving a request to rezone property from C3 General Commercial and R6 High Density Multi-Family Residential to PUD Planned Unit Development for property located at 610 and 648 Marion Boulevard, Marion, Iowa. This is from Talon LLC, and this is the final consideration.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-02, approving the final consideration of the request to rezone the property from C3 General Commercial and R6 High Density Multi-Family Residential to Planned Unit Development for the property at 610 and 648 Marion Boulevard. Discussion? Is the final consideration? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a public hearing regarding a preliminary and final site development plan for an office shop building located south of Partners Avenue and west of Medco Drive. This is brought forward by 2040 Building Concepts. The public hearing is now open. Can we have a brief overview?
Yep.
Dave?
Yes, as you had said, this is a public hearing for a preliminary and final site development plan for a office flexible shop space located between ESM and Frank Street Service or Partners Avenue and the Medco Development, the MEC Development. The proposed shop space will be the fifth project in the MEC District. And we'll offer the ability for not only corporate offices, but flexible warehouse, shop space, overhead doors, and truck loading docks to be located on the rear of the property away from the public view. And we'll have a very much office frontage, office frontage along Partners Avenue with both employee and visitor parking along the front. The plans meet and exceed all the standards for tier-three level design in the MEC. It'll be a high-quality project and it'll be, it'll fit right in with everything else we've done in that tier-three zone. Planning and zoning commission met last month and did recommend approval.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing is open. Do we have anyone here to address the council either in favor or in opposition of this measure? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 30272, approving a preliminary site development plan for an office shop building located south of Partners Ave. and west of Medco Drive, Marion, Iowa, 2040 Building Concepts.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30272, approving the preliminary site development plan for an office shop building located south of Partners Avenue and west of Medco Drive. Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 30273, approving a final site development plan for an office shop building located south of Partners Ave. and west of Medco Drive, Marion, Iowa, 2040 Building Concepts.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30273, approving the final site development plan for the office shop building located south of Partners Avenue and west of Medco Drive. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution Number 30273, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved. Next, we have a public hearing regarding a request to rezone property located at 2095 Third Avenue. This is for the Marion Community Build Project. Do we have a overview?
Quick brief one. Marion Community Build, as part of the Medco, has submitted a request to rezone property from R3, which is our two-family residential, allows single-family and duplex homes. And they requested to rezone to TR3, which is traditional two-family residential, still allows duplexes. The idea behind traditional is current zoning doesn't quite fit some of those old neighborhoods with setbacks or designing considerations. The traditional neighborhood will allow smaller lots that are commonly found in those older neighborhoods and will allow reduced setbacks, front and side yards to accommodate the homes that we see already in those neighborhoods. Marion Community Build, it's a large lot with one home on it. The zoning, it will allow them to split it into two smaller lots and allow the students to work on rehabbing the existing home, and then it will allow them a future lot for new construction as part of that program. Staff did send notice out within 300 feet of the subject property for this public hearing. Planning and zoning commission met last month and did recommend approval. Plans and commission met last month and did recommend approval.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing is open. Do we have any anyone here to address the council either in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. Please state your name and address, speaking of the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman staff, Dustin Kern, 4350, 29th Avenue. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I'm here representing Marion Community Build LLC. I really don't have much to add. Thank you, Dave, for the staff report. We're excited about this opportunity for the students. You know, as Dave mentioned, the project that we're working on now is a rehab, but I think it's a unique opportunity to provide a new construction in this neighborhood and for the students to work on as well, and hopefully school year 2022, 23. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any questions for Dustin? Okay. Anyone else to address the council on this measure? All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 22-04, approving a request to rezone property from R3 Two Family Residential to TR3 Traditional Two Family Residential for property located at 2095 Third Avenue, Marion, Iowa. Marion Community Build, initial consideration.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-04, approving the request to rezone property from R3 Two Family Residential to TR3 Traditional Two Family Residential for the property at 2095 Third Avenue. This is the initial consideration. Discussion. Yes, Steve?
Yeah, just, just a comment. I did go out finally and take a look at this lot. It's an odd lot, especially where the house is. They've got a driveway, no garage, driveway, a shared driveway, I guess, would be on the west side. And the lot they want to split off, I mean, there's about a six-foot drop from the back of this house, and then it drops off six feet. And I looked at it from the standpoint, I go, well, could they put a garage there? That really wouldn't make sense at all. So the lot they want to separate here does fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. It's not going to be, it's going to be a narrow lot. It's got some depth to it, and it's not going to be a very big house, but what they're proposing does fit in with the neighborhood, so I would support it, and I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, other discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, I, a question came to mind, and I should have maybe asked during the public hearing. This, I think Mr. Kern can answer this. So it's a, the existing structure would be rehab, and then on the new parcel, not saying that exactly right, there would be a new construction. Is that correct? Okay, so two opportunities.
Yes.
Two learning opportunities.
Learning opportunities. And kind of a third, actually. Because the garage for the northerly house, the existing house, was basically in shambles on the south side. That was torn down. We're actually going to be building a new detached garage on the west side for the existing house. So it's really good opportunity all around.
Right, just out of curiosity, is all of that work going to go in parallel, or is it going to be done one half to the other?
We're currently rehabbing the existing house on the north side. Hopefully, in the spring, we'll build the garage for that house. And then, starting in the fall, school year 2022, the goal is to start on the new construction and work that through the school year.
What a great project.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Students are only there for hour, hour and a half every day, so it's tough to get a lot of production, but they're learning a lot, so it's fun. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 22-04, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Your Honor, I abstained of this one.
Okay. So the motion is approved with one abstention. Okay. That brings us to the point in the meeting where we have the public forum, which is timed set aside for comments from the public on any topic. If there's anyone here to address the council, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we will close this portion of the meeting and move on to council comments. We'll start with Mr. Sternan.
I have none, Your Honor. Thank you.
Nothing.
No?
Nothing.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, wow, quiet group today.
I just have a brief comment. Number one, I am very glad to be saying the month of February instead of January. That's really a personal comment, although with a lot of the people I have talked to, they share the same sentiment that they're glad to see January in the rearview mirror. February is here. We're seeing more daylight. The days are getting longer. So I think you're starting to see people being a little more upbeat now than they have been in the past five weeks, so that's all good. Thanks.
Well, of course, I would have something to add. Well. You know, I was, seriously, I was filling a little time, and I was thinking about one of our longstanding favorite topics, and that was brick streets, but I was going back into the historical registry, the registry of historical places, and I was looking at some of the old photographs of Marion that are contained in there. And I did that on the heels of driving through Uptown and seeing the substantial and wonderful work, the combination of the library in Broad and Main, and I was just kind of making the comparison of old Marion to new Marion, and I find it just astounding of what's the transformation that we're going through. And I think everybody that's been involved in that in the community councils in the past, to see the vision, staff, everybody, it's, it's really amazing. And the work that has been completed on streetscape just is a, it's just a compliment to the, the existing buildings that are there. So thanks for that. It was kind of a neat historical comparison I did.
Thank you. For my part, I want to recognize our city manager. He got the opportunity to speak and represent the city at the Economic Alliance Annual Meeting. Did a great job. Thank you, Ryan. Since the last meeting, just share some of the things I've been, I've been, I've been doing. I had the opportunity to do an interview with KMY Radio. We had the Gazette editorial board meeting. I had the first meeting of the Diversity Council. Of course, we had our budget session last, last week, which, again, I want to thank the staff, everyone who worked so hard and being so well-prepared for that. I think we all really appreciated it. Everyone up here really appreciated it and thought it was a good process, so thank you for, for all your hard work on that. Of course, the Civil Rights Commission interviews, we had three openings and did those interviews. Have some really excellent candidates. And I, I had the opportunity to meet with a developer earlier this week about what he's doing in Marion. And it was, you know, just to kind of add to what council member Harper was talking about. It's, it's so exciting to, to be at this point after having, you know, been, been around for a long time and dreamt about this moment and where Marion is right now, and to see the excitement and the momentum and the transformation that we've all worked so hard to, to make happen. And it's, it's really fun and rewarding to be, to be part of it. And back to the developer that I talked to, you know, he was just so excited about what's going on in Marion and really couldn't say enough about Marion being the place in the region where it's perceived as the place where everything's happening and where all the great stuff's happening. So it's due to a lot of, it doesn't happen by chance. It's due to a lot of hard work and a lot of planning and collaboration, working together, and let's keep that going. And really want to just thank everyone for all their hard work. Keep reaching higher. Keep doing great things. Okay. That brings us to our closed session.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under sections 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa.
Second. Moved in seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa. May we have the legal counsel statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section 21.51(c).
Okay, any discussion before we take the vote? All right, we'll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned to closed session. Thank you.